We're going to call to order the Hessen Park for Education Hybrid Workshop Meeting for Monday, February 6. Thank you all for coming. Can we call to order? Oh, they're mine. I got this.
I missed, I missed meeting.
Maybe it was for our class, but this is very well for my herself.
I'm sorry. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies in which any business affected their interests is discussed or acted upon. In complying to the Open Public Meetings Act, the Hessen Park for Education has posted notice this meeting set before the timetable location to be submitted for publication to the home news review in Starlighter. And posted on the board's website that used 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Member of the public who wish to address the board would be given the opportunity to do so before the board gives a meeting. Ms. Fasaldon? Here. Ms. Coleman? Ms. Gallon?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-D'Nicolà?
Here.
Ms. Bruce?
Here.
Mr. Rosovich? Ms. Bourneys?
Here.
Mr. Woodburn?
Here.
Okay, can we add the first allegiance?
Let's leave this through the class of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a pretty lengthy list of communications that we secretly agenda, all related to our starting at times. So we have sixteen here that are reported, and for the interest of explanations, once a email chain has been started between the member of the public and Dr. Posia, it no longer goes to the entire board, follow-up comes over to the entire board. That's because it's got regulations for boards and how we communicate. So, hang on, here was the initial email that we got on certain topics that we've got here. A couple of minutes, we don't have any minutes for this, okay? Start here, we know. So, agenda. So let me get to our student representative course. So.
Yeah. So for Irving, the PTO candy grams will be collected through Friday, and Irving will celebrate National Schools Counselors Week by showing his Slim how thankful we are for her. And then Random Acts of Kindness Week will be celebrated next week, and our students will take part in Spirit Week, and the staff will have their own fun and activities during the week. They're also collecting cans of dog and cat food that were donated to Sam's Hope as part of their Hundred Days of School Celebration. Celebration will go through February 16. At Bartle School, the Universal Drum Ensemble Assembly was on the third. The Family Steam Night was, is going to be February 8th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Bartle. The EPIC Valentine's Dance is February 13th from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. The John Shue Author Assembly is February 16th, and Coffee with the Principal is February 21st from 8:30 to 9:30 a.m.
For the middle school, attention of six grade parents, the teens and girls hosting after-school, six grades, social, music, food and other goodies on next Thursday from 3:00 to 4:30 in the middle school cafeteria. And students can sign up during their flex period with their teacher. Live Touch will be doing a weekly picture retakes tomorrow. Order forms are available in the main office. If your child is taking retakes, please go at Ms. Atanasio in the main office. No, you can reach her at a@atanasio@hpschools.net. Beginning in a few weeks, they're going to be launching a new program called Paper. Paper is a tutoring program where students have free access to immediate help 24/7. Also, marking year two grades are now available to be in Genesis, and if you do not know, you're locked in, please contact Ms. Santiago at HPschools.net and the main office. Last week in the middle school, student congress is selling stuffed animals for Valentine's Day during lunch. The price of each stuffed animal is $2. And at the high school, the girls and boys basketball teams and winter track team are doing very well. Quarter tube report cards are out on Genesis, and the senior class Krispy Kreme fundraiser is ongoing and money is due on Wednesday, so please give your orders and support the senior club. For Valentine's Day, the Red Cross Club will be selling flowers this week, and the freshman class fundraiser will be selling stuffed animals. This Friday, there will be an in-school elective there, and scheduling for the next year for the class of 2024 will start next week, and for the class of 2025, it will start the week of February 21st. And the week after that, of February 27th, will be for the class of 2026. To help students, the Program Planning Guide and other scheduling resources on the high school website, so please check that out. On the 16th this month, there will be an assembly featuring Omar Edwards. There will be no school on the 17th and the 20th, and there will be a winter dance at, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. on February 24th.
Thank you. I'm really busy, especially at high school. We're going to go on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Posia has a lead your presentation for the board and the public, and then she's going to be able to source additional information.
Okay, format. Thank you. All right, I will be, let me just hook myself up, and then I'll begin my presentation. Okay, well said. Okay, so tonight I'm going to provide some updates on our strategic plan goals. We have some updates on high school graduation proposed policy change for the credits that I know we've been talking about in several committees over the past couple of months. In addition, I have some updates on the full day preschool fall 2023 roll run. After this lengthy presentation, I will end my presentation for board members and open it up for questions and comments. And then after that, I do have a follow-up presentation based on the number of inquiries that we got on transportation, and I want to provide a refresher for anybody that is on asking for more information about that. So first, we have three strategic plan goals, three major goals, and then sub-goals under that. Our first strategic plan goal, the district will ensure that curriculum and instruction support the whole child, meaning their academic, social, emotional, and mental wellness of every student. Under our strategic plan goal, we look at, we're doing work on play-based learning, conscious discipline, a mental health plan, revamping in-school suspensions, and later start times. So in terms of play-based learning at Irving, I'm happy to report that the teachers have been receiving professional development. They have access to a course which has a lot of videos and resources. In addition, they've been getting coaching. So we've been really working on play-based instruction. In addition, the kindergarten team has reached out during an upcoming professional development PLC work to go into a site visit to look at documentation of play-based learning. So we're really excited about the work that we're doing there. In addition, Christian ran a parent workshop that was really helpful with limit setting and allowing play and how to encourage play at the home. So some of the strengths that have come out of that data and work that we're doing is a teach that from Christian and his, and his group and the coaching staff. They said our teaching staff is nurturing and have supportive relationships with students. And daily routines are implemented with structure, consistency, and predictability, which is good, a good start for encouraging play-based learning. And an area of growth that he recommends we continue working on is to maximize play-based interactions with students to facilitate social and emotional learning development. And that's where that documentation comes in. We really want to capture what the students are doing and learning through play-based instruction, so that is our, the next part of the process for that goal. The second part of our goal one is conscious discipline at Irving and Bartle, so I'm happy to report that Irving is in year two of their implementation, which is a piggyback and a support to the responsive classroom work that we've been doing at old schools. So for Irving, they do, they've rewritten their whole school and playground expectations with responsive and conscious discipline language. The whole school meetings are now called school family meetings, so we're working on changing our language very strategically at Irving. And all staff are in their second year of the virtual training with conscious, with a conscious discipline coach, so they get virtual training specifically with a coach. And Bartle is in year one, and the staff is currently completing their 10 sessions of training during PLC time, so what Irving was doing last year. I'm really proud of the work that Elizabeth Asamoah, I know she presented a couple of quarter meetings ago about our district-wide mental health plan. So I'm really incredibly proud of the work that we've been doing, expanding our teen center to our tween center. The number, I think Ms. Asamoah reported, the number of students at Irving and Bartle that are taking advantage of the mental health supports, which is really wonderful. It's great to see that we're overcoming the stigma that surrounds mental health. It's okay to not be okay and to reach out and get the help that you need. We're hoping that our students that can connect with the teen center, I see Ms. Coleman in Bartle all the time, which is fantastic, and Dr. Rock. So we're hoping that by the, our younger students making connections with our teen center staff will make them more likely to, to use those services when they get up to middle school and high school, and they won't feel that stigma is associated, and they already have developed relationships with the staff members. And we hired interns with our RESR funds to be able to support the expansion of our teen center. In addition, we created a three-tiered system of support. Tier one is the mental health support within the classroom, providing professional development and coaching to our teachers on how to handle small issues that arise with mental health support in classroom. That's sort of the trauma-informed classroom work that we've been doing, and the high school, in fact, is working through the PSA grant that we approved, board meeting, to continue working on the trauma-informed coaching with teachers. Tier two is group counseling and group work, and tier three is individual more intensive work that is needed with students during the school day, before, after school, whenever they're available. I, of course, reporting, continue to report out that we have one more year left of the funding. We were able to save the funding for DCF, from DCF this past, this year and for next year. And we are working as the Finance and Facilities Committee to explore ways to bring the mental health program fully into the operational budget, so we don't have to stress every year wondering if we're going to be able to cut that program. So I'm really proud of our work. It's not over yet, and we'll continue to work creatively to, to make sure we are able to fully fund our own mental health program in-house. The, another one of our first goals for Whole Child is also regamping middle school, Bartle, and Irving in school suspension programs. So at Irving, I'm happy to report that they do a, it's called a therapeutic model, and there's more to it, but for sake of time, because it's a pretty lengthy presentation, I'll report back. They do what's called safe space, five steps of self-regulation, four breathing exercises, feeling buddies, and conflict resolution timeline. So they do work through a therapeutic model as part of students that might need like a timeout from class to regroup and see the counselor, whether it's a school counselor or a mental health specialist or Ms. McNally. They work collectively to make sure that the students have what they need to be successful, re-engaging back in the classroom. Bartle is doing a version of the RISE program, and I think Bartle and middle school are both doing RISE, so Bartle has adopted that as well. Students engage in academic, pro-social, and reflective activities. They do a lot of work on goal-setting and restorative practices to repair harm. And that is under the watch of our Student and Staff Support Specialist, Ms. Tracy Maiden. At the middle school, RISE is overseen by our High School System Principal, Ms. Suko, and they spend the morning with counselors in the teen center getting some mental health support and some counseling. And then they spend the afternoon focusing on academic work, restorative practices, and/or circles depending on the nature of the situation. Under Whole Child, the strategic plan goal that was set for this year says research and recommend later start times for students in grades six through 12, and that change was adopted on January 23rd, 2023. Our second strategic plan goal is that the district will ensure the inclusion and support of students of all abilities, races, cultures, religions, belief systems, sexual orientations, genders, gender identities, and socioeconomic backgrounds. And there are four sub-goals under this particular goal, which is the power standards for instruction, the Math 6 implementation, our detract, our math redesign, the AP and honors accessibility, providing more students access to higher level curricula at the high school, and our tier interventions for discipline. So I'm happy to report for our power standards, the teachers will select and use power standards in student-friendly, friendly language, and this is for students in grades six through 12. In science, the teachers have been focusing on two to three science and engineering practices, for example, developing and using models, constructing arguments, some higher-level mathematics taxonomy skills. There's professional development in February for grades six through 12 teachers with Data Spire. We've approved them, all the teachers entered that company to come in and provide professional development on the teachers for those particular power standards that they've selected, and how to assess that properly, and how to collect that data, and what they can do with that information. In addition, at the high school, they're working on portfolios. The teachers have chosen graphing as their focus area for, for science as well, so they definitely want to focus on the graphic area of, of data and those science and engineering practices. And math, Ms. Saka has reported that the teachers still working on selecting their area of focus. It gets a little more difficult for math because the content isn't so smooth between the different math areas versus science. The English, Ms. Rodriguez has reported that the standards have been agreed upon, and now they're working on collecting their data and, and working with the students on those power standards. And then all other departments, your language, arts, and things like that, are receiving professional development on the new standards, including social studies, because those came out. So once they get their professional development on the actual standards, they can then decide on their power standards. Ms. Saka has been working to piggyback where I left off in my work as former STEM supervisor, monitoring the implementation of our middle school Math 6 Plus class to ensure students are being exposed to high-level curricula and differentiated instruction, and again, this is a goal for the middle school. The math teachers meet regularly to prepare purposeful instruction towards articulated math standards. So that's one way that they've been working on ensuring that they have that access to be exposed to the higher level, higher level standards. She's been tracking progress in implementation of higher-level standards, which will be discussed at our upcoming Curriculum Instruction and Equity and Excellence Committee meetings. There's ongoing communication with parents by the teachers and Ms. Saka, and they're implementing complex tasks and intentional Math 7 enrichment. So they're being very, very intentional and trying to do more heterogeneous tasks where there's sort of these low-floor, high-ceiling opportunities. So every student has access into higher-level curricula. And I know we've reported on this several times, but I'll reiterate the work that we're doing to implement the AP and honors accessibility cohort during the summer and school year for students that are taking higher-level classes for the first time, and this is for our high school students. Over the summer, we implemented a summer cohort for incoming ninth graders through the operational budget. The current high school cohort program was canceled due to only one participating side up, so we ran it with incoming ninth graders. And we're continuing to support all students in the high school that are taking a higher-level class for the first time with coaching, tutoring, and monitoring of, of their scores and their feedback and input. In addition, we're going to continue the program and adjust as needed, so we're going to run the summer cohort again, maybe tweaking it a little bit and trying to keep the word out earlier to get more participants. We're digging deeper into student interest and goals. We're finding that math might be a little bit one of a harder subjects to prioritize going into for the first time, so we're looking at maybe more personalized class options through the humanities as first-time entry into, into higher-level classes. So we're really kind of digging deeper into interesting goals and making sure we provide appropriate pathways for students that are interested in taking higher-level classes. Under strategic plan goal two, we're working to develop and implement tiered interventions and proactive strategies for discipline, and this is across the entire district. At Irving, we've been working on the responsive classroom and conscious discipline integration, which has been going really well. You see that previously to like the in-school suspension, their therapeutic model, they use the conscious discipline timeline as a way to learn about how to understand that their actions have consequences, how they impact others, what they can do to work through those together. Bartle, they're in the works of a draft of tiered system of behavioral support, so tier one would be things that teachers can do in the classroom. Tier two would be teachers' behavioral support, social and emotional learning lab, and the mental health supports from the tween center. And then tier three is the Student and Staff Support Specialist with support as needed, so they're drafting their three-tiered system of behavioral supports for interventions. In middle school, they're working on, they work off the tiered code of conduct currently. In addition, they're revamping their intervention of referral services for a stronger tiered system of support for interventions and proactive strategies for behavior. And in middle school, they're providing ongoing professional development on classroom management and de-escalation techniques. At the high school, they're integrating restorative practices into detention by a trained teacher, Ms. Paxton, and that was a previously missing component of the program, was the RP work. So I'm happy to report that the high school has been implementing that into the work Ms. Paxton has been doing with students. The student assistance counselor provides support to students as well. Like I said in the previous slide, we're partnering with NJPSA for training for trauma-centered engagement, which is another layer of intervention for tier one for the high school. And district-wide, I'm currently in the process of doing small-scale formative evaluation of restorative practices in responsive classroom, and hopefully we'll be able to share that out soon, the findings of that formative evaluation. Our third strategic plan goal is the district will ensure implementation of a more consistent and effective approach to differentiated instruction via content, process, or product. And the three sub-goals under there are authentic work performance assessments, SOAR, and professional development for language-based racism. So first, research and develop assessment opportunities that emphasize transfer skills, problem-solving, creativity, citizenship, and critical thinking. This is across the entire district. For our elementary and middle school math, they've been doing a lot of work on complex tasks, which is skill transfer and problem solving using multiple strategies and inroads for math for all students. At the elementary and middle school science level, they've been doing work on phenomenon-based learning, which is all about problem solving and critical thinking. At the high school level, they've been doing, for science, plain evidence reasoning models, which focus on data analysis and graphing of skills, again, through that authentic problem-solving lens. At high school math, they've been doing project-based learning. And for example, in our new stats class, they're doing experimental data collection and research. In addition, at Irving, there, we implemented a new phonics screener that replaces the FOTUS and PENNELL assessment. Irving, they've been working on citizen, citizenship projects like pet food collection to give back and be good citizens of their town. In addition, they do monthly lessons on problem solving with the school counselor. And similarly with the teen center, they've been implementing two surveys that measure resilience, one for ages five through nine, and one for ages 10 through 18. That's developmentally appropriate. We also have another goal to research, develop, and pilot SOAR at the high school, which is a class that provides flexible and personalized learning pathways for students. And I'm so excited to share, and I know Ms. Rodriguez will share tomorrow for curriculum instruction, so I don't want to lose all the thunder for curriculum construction. However, Alpha Aviation, these students have begun, they have, I believe, it's the last six students that are registered semester two, to take a course to get their drone pilot license throughout Alpha Aviation. And they can either receive course credit for applied physics, which is a semester course, a science course, or their career in tech ed course. So whichever one they prefer, they can get high school credits for getting that. In addition, they get a drone license. So you'll see as one of the Finance and Facilities approvals for next meeting would be to approve the contract with them so that we can pay for their licensure and the exam that they have to take. So we're really excited about that. The first day was on January 30th of instruction, and they do have potential for paid internships over the summer, so once the students do get this, they can pretty much already start working and using it. So I'm really excited, and I'll keep my mouth shut because we have some other exciting things in the works, but I'll let Curriculum and Instruction Committee share that out after our meeting tomorrow night. In addition, we're providing professional development to teachers interested in researching the impact of language-based racism, particularly for ELA in grades K through five. We've actually adjusted this goal slightly. We worked with excellence to adjust this goal slightly to be more literacy accessibility, because that's really what we were talking about. So we're trying to include it as a broader strategic plan goal to be inclusive of affirming different languages. In addition, we want to strengthen our instruction in the foundational skills. For example, we've been working on dedicating time for foundations, which includes decodable books instead of level readers. So we're trying to get away from the level readers and more decodable books than we put in foundations as a way to support the work that we're doing. We're really trying to expose students to different levels of text, not just the one that they may be able to read, but that could be through mentor texts, read alouds. In addition, we're working with teachers to shift their classroom libraries to categories, themes, authors, or topics instead of levels, so we're really excited about that work. So I, we wanted to shift it to literacy accessibility because we're really talking about a lot of things, and the work we're doing is, is really amazing in this area, so a slight shift on one of our goals to literacy accessibility. So I really, for, for the staff that may ever hear this presentation and to my leadership team, thank you so much for your hard work and dedication. You know, there's a lot that we do as a district every day, day in, day out, that often doesn't get recognized, but in addition to the daily work that we do, we also make great strides for these particular goals added on to it. So I'm really proud of the progress that we're making in continuing to move the district forward to meet the needs of all students. So I want to shift gears a little bit.
Do you want to ask about questions on?
Oh, sure. Oh, sure. Okay, yeah, oh, that'd be great. Okay. Okay, so any questions or comments from the board on strategic plan goals? Really excited.
I think drone stuff sounds amazing. I'm excited about the changes in the reading with the changing of categories and topics. That's fantastic. And all the discipline work, thank you. It's really good to see that that's happening, especially the middle school suspension changes. I didn't realize. So, thank you. And thanks to all the staff. It's a lot. I was very excited to see that graphing was a focus in high school because as a middle school teacher myself, it's one of those topics that crosses all content areas. So my question is, are there plans to vertically, articulate, you know, vertically align, certainly. The work that the high school is doing, kind of give them, you know, give the middle school teachers maybe some feedback on what they're seeing and maybe kind of, you know, point it down that way.
Absolutely, and actually, the teachers that are going to be attending the Data Spire workshop are grades six through 12 for that reason, so Ms. Saka has already thought that through. So they'll be attending the PD, so once, but the implementation will be at the high school, and then once they implement and give feedback, the team will work together, yeah, to, to articulate it to the middle school, and then, you know, eventually it'd be great to, you know, push it down as much as we can, you know, obviously to the elementary level too, that's, that's really great.
By graphing, you're talking about, you know, X-Y coordinates and counting planners. Is it a special, like, education?
No, but like X-Y, yeah, coordinate, yeah, graphing. Well, as a former science, K, middle school and high school science teacher, one of the struggles that I always saw was that students love bar graphs. Like, everything has to be a bar graph, you know, and if it's changed over time, it's like, oh, well, that's a line graph, and what does that mean? And, you know, understanding, understanding that data, especially with the idea of statistics, that's, that's really important for them to understand if they're looking at a graph. You know, graphs can show correlation, but they don't always show causation, right? I, you know, that's very important for them to understand that I can graph the rise in sea levels with the rise in pirate attacks, right? Just because I'm showing a correlation doesn't mean there's actually causation, right? Sea level rising doesn't mean that it's actually causing the rise of pirate attacks. So it's important for them to be able to graph data, look at data, analyze data from graphs, and really make sense of it.
We need others, you do. There were.
Yes, we have to deal with it, yeah.
Monique, hands up.
Okay. I can't see, because I have my screen to hold.
Monique, go ahead.
Thanks, yeah, I just wanted to also say thank you for the presentation. Really excited to hear about the aviation program as well. I literally had that on my list of questions to ask you in terms of where that was, so really excited to hear about that. Um, question I had about the evaluation, the formative evaluation of the restorative practices program. Is that, I know it's that small-scale formative, does that mean that that's an in-house evaluation that's going to be done? I know we've talked about consulting with Anne Gregory, and she said that she doesn't necessarily either have the time or doesn't do the actual evaluations of programs, but had suggested some resources or would be possibly helping you to find others who would be able to do that evaluation. So I was just curious to know who will actually conduct the evaluation of the program.
So I'm conducting it with her support, so she's done a couple of Zooms and meetings with me to look over the data. She sent me some surveys that I was using to implement, so they were, you know, valid and reliable surveys. And she was helping me, you know, through some of the data collection and things like that. So that's why I call it small scale, because it's me and the time that I have to be able to do it. We, I did reach out to Convengo Education on the cost of a maybe larger scale, what it would cost for us to implement that, a program evaluation on a larger scale. And actually, we're going to tie it through the CCEI funding from the IDA grant because we want to put it into the multiple, multi-system, tiered systems of support that we're doing with special education as well, because we do have a lot of students that are classified and classified for behavioral challenges. So we want to make sure we're putting the right systems and processes. So we'll be tying the work together, but right now the small-scale formative evaluation is done by me with Anne's support and guidance.
Thank you, and this, Anne is still providing this consultation service at no cost, is that correct?
Yes, correct, she's doing it on goodness.
I mean, not to crap there, but I mean, geez, that sounds like we need to be thinking about ways to, you know, really compensate her, especially for the supporting you and doing this formative eval. So that just came to my mind. And I also do think it's important that we have an independent, you know, body sort of doing the evaluation, large scale, small scale, whatever. Whenever we're evaluating ourselves, we should have someone else come in and doing that work. So I'm happy to hear that that's the direction you want to move in. And then I just wanted to make a quick note, I too is happy to hear that you included in the goals our workaround literacy accessibility, isn't that your framing? I do just want to kind of mention that when we talk about SHIP, I think our discussions in Equity and Excellence have been about just readiness, you know, teacher readiness to address what we talked about as an equity issue in terms of literacy instruction and, you know, equalizing access to quality literacy instruction and making sure that, as you said, different languages that students bring to the classroom would not be a barrier to, you know, high-quality access to reading and equitable reading instruction. And we really talked about this from the perspective of an anti-racist practice, but the idea was just bringing up the level of preparedness on the teacher's part to be able to sort of first wrap their minds around what this means because it's so different from what I think how literacy instruction has been taught, but, or has been facilitated. But I think that I don't want to move, I'm hoping we don't move too far away from that, we talk about SHIP, but we recognize that it's truly a part of that anti-racist work that we as a district have committed ourselves to, that we really look at this new act lens of addressing the huge equity gap that again was brought to our attention, or really highlighted, I should say, by students themselves who talked about their experiences of starting in Irving and feeling like they were growing at that young age, that they were in a certain group of leaders at that very young age. So I would just hope that we're not getting, you know, far away from that. I don't think that was necessarily, that was our discussion in Equity and Excellence, I think it was really just about trying to make sure that teachers are better prepared and have the resources they need and understand this work. And so again, I just wanted to point that out, and I will, there are two more discussions about that in Equity and Excellence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle, I see your hand up.
Yeah, just really quickly, first of all, I wanted to thank Monique for bringing up the points that she did. I think those are really important from her curriculum perspective as well, to make sure that teacher readiness is number one priority. Because I think that it's important to give teachers what they need to support, you know, the progress that we're making at the board level. Because it's easy to say we should be, you know, doing less implementing is a completely different thing. So I thank you for that, Monique. And I wanted to also thank Christina because it feels so nice to not have this feeling of struggle when we are putting forward goals. You know, it's not that we had adversarial representation before this, but it really feels like Christina, you won't get it. So I really want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Michelle, I'm actually going to piggyback on what Michelle just said. Because I should have helped start this way, but for the sake of the public, the strategic plan is what guides the work is for Dr. Posia and our whole administration. And it really, I think the overarching goals have been around a number of years. But the individual goals of what Dr. Posia developed with her team, I believe in the late spring of last year. And really the specifics is really we're talking about the last few months, right, the last less than six months. So it's trends amount of progress, always one way to always know what to do to achieve these things. Some of these goals are not ever fully achievable, I'm sure we're working on it, but it's certainly a lot of progress in a number of months.
Any other board comments on the year?
In grammar condition, sure. We're just talking about what it says, that it's students who are, teachers who are interested in learning that. So they sign up for it, not all teachers get that education?
Correct.
Anything else? If not, we're going to watch you.
Okay, two more parts, two more parts, and then, and then, uh, and then another presentation, okay. I appreciate everybody's patience. Okay, the second part of my presentation is about the high school credits for graduation. I know that the committee members have been sharing this out with the community, but I'd like to formalize it a little bit more because I would like to put it up for policy change. So after this particular meeting and this presentation, the policy will go through Curriculum Instruction and Equity and Excellence and Policy for review. So right now, currently, students at the high school are required to take 135 credits for graduation. That mean all the state guidelines of 120 credits, so 120 credits is what the state says. So the state puts out like, here is the, you have to hit these credits in order to graduate as a high school student. Thirty-two point five credits in our 135 are electives. And then there's a link that when the presentation goes out tomorrow with the video, 18 schools in the county have a lower credit requirement than Highland Park. Eight of the schools in our county are at 120. What we wanted to communicate to the community and part of the reason why we're doing the 120 credits and what we'd like to accomplish is, you know, over the years, we've had to eliminate many elective options, really since going back from the 90s. Obviously, a lot of it well before my time, my guess is probably had to do with some budgetary issues. I know the consumer science, like fashion design and banking was for budgetary constraints many years ago, video production, carpentry, automotive, so we've had to get rid of a lot of our electives. So it really puts less options out there for the students that have to take so many elective classes. In addition, recent economic stresses have increased our dropout rate. So I know we've talked about that at several committee meetings, that our dropout rate has definitely significantly increased. And that's, you know, it's very hard when we're saying that they should get 135 credits to graduate from Highland Park High School with a diploma. That does not include if students have a modification in their IEP, so I just want to make sure that that's clear. If students have in their IEP that they get 120, we meet the IEP for sure. We're just talking about those students that are classified but maybe struggling because they have jobs to help support their families, they have to take care of their siblings, you know, there's a myriad of other reasons why our students, you know, the stresses that are placed on them. So we're recommending that we should reduce our graduation requirement to 120 credits, and we'd also like to add a civic readiness and community service component with an hour, like a certain hour requirements issue to ensure our students are ready for engaging in a society productively. We're really cognizant about requiring classes per se, because the more that we require, the more it puts a stress on our students to meet a certain amount of graduation credits. So what we'd like to see is actually service learning, so it's not credits per se, but a requirement that the students give back to their community. A lot of our students already do this, but we'd really like to consider it for policy. It's already an hour expectation for the mission of Spirit. So right now, we do a service day, which is a tradition prior to Thanksgiving that the students participated. There's already plenty of extra co-curricular requirements provided for this service learning, National Honor Society, Environmental Club, NECA, Model UN, Ooh-Ooh Awareness, Student Conference, Asian Culture Club, African American Culture Club, LO, so we already have that in place already. And in addition, we're in a really great situation that there's a lot of community service even in our community and within walking distance of everything, from, you know, school-based needs for community service help to Parks and Recreation Department, Zone Six, the aging adults and citizens with disabilities, the food pantry. There's a lot of opportunities for our students to give back, and that's what we would like to see. So in terms of next steps, we'd like the board event to accept recommendations to lower graduation requirements, beginning with the classes of 2026 or 2027, depending on how they would see fit. Revise the program planning guide and notify students and parents. Develop criteria for how students can meet the service requirements. And we put in there two schools, Robbinsville and Don Ellen, that already have this as part of their policy graduation requirements, so it gives us a place to start with. And they have requirements of 25 to 30 hours. And phase in service hour requirements slowly for existing classes, not to say that our, you know, our juniors would have to get, you know, X amount of hours or whatever, but phase it in slowly over time. So we'd really like to see those two recommendations. So like I said, you know, our current policy says a graduating student must have earned a minimum of 135 credits. But we propose the change to be reduced to this New Jersey state minimum of 120, and we think this would benefit the students in their senior year maybe a little bit early for employment or other options. Students can repeat courses if needed more easily during the school schedules. Students don't need to be, are not required to take electives that they're not interested in. So right now, they end up taking classes that they're just not interested in. And, you know, it's not fair to other people that might be interested in the topic or something like that, so they could really diversify what they would like. Plus the options through SOAR that we're doing in our independent studies are really give students opportunities, you know, thinking outside the box of a traditional class. Obviously, some of our concerns would be students may need to be enrolled in multiple study halls, that's a concern that we might have, that we can certainly address if that happens to be the case. Although we do understand that not every student is just going to take 120 credits. We do recognize that a lot of our students will take way more than 120 credits. And we may have elective courses that may have reduced enrollment, and that might be an issue. However, we're confident that if we can expand our SOAR offerings in independent studies and maybe our WISE program, that those teachers will have other, you know, it's just a different way of thinking about a class. So maybe instead of taking, you know, architectural design, maybe we have more like a major space option where students that are interested in more STEM-related independent studies or courses that we don't offer can, you know, maybe take that during that time instead of, you know, a specific class with a specific curriculum. So more self-guided with the support of a staff member. So we're thinking outside the box on ways to do this that would meet the needs of all students. So our, so the next, so I'll pause and allow for questions. So what we're going to do is, again, the policy is going to go through committees, and we'll work on, unless we get major pushback, we'd like to explore the service learning component as well. So those would go through committee, and remember that policies go through two rounds, first reading and second reading. So there'll be a couple of months in which this will be open to discussion and comment as well. So I'll pause there for questions.
Our student representatives, you have made notes on this, I don't want to put you on the spot, it's okay to say no, but it's likely something you have to put on.
I mean, personally, I do know a lot of students who didn't get a chance to take classes because there were basically too many students in there, and there was a lot of scheduling issues. I remember I had a lot of scheduling issues my junior year because there was just not enough space in the classes I wanted to take. So I think it's a really good idea to have, to lower the credit requirements because I have also noticed that it is considerably higher than under schools. So I think it's going to be a great way to progress forward.
Yeah, I agree, and I think that's also for that seniors will be able to leave early, like if they need to do anything else, but yeah.
Speaking of the two seniors also.
Could I know?
Yeah, sure.
I am, what was I going to say? I, it sounds, it sounds great, I absolutely agree, we need to not be forcing kids to be in school taking electives. They hate just to, so we can say how a park has super strict requirements. I do worry about the electives thing though, I'm curious, I mean, I feel like we do have a lot of situations where we're like, oh, there's not enough people interested in loving that. There's not enough people interested in loving, so I do really worry about that. I don't know if there's a way to sort of, well, I guess we monitor it, but it's not working. I hate to see us restrict the variety of requirements we have because.
Well, we're not restricting it.
But I mean, we'll cancel classes if there's a lot of students signing up for architectural engineering.
Well, because, you know, it's top directed, whatever it's happening.
Right, right, it's great, you're right. I, well, I don't, I'm scared, so I don't do these things. Just start around.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, so the 25 to 30 hour service requirement, I mean, just on first glance, it sort of seems like a lot in particular that has to have a job or something like that.
Exactly, yeah.
So that would be what, it's instead of doing credits or how, you know, how does that happen?
It would just be over the course of four years, they would have to get X amount of hours of service hours over four years in order to graduate.
I think four hours, four, over four years is a little bit different.
And like I said, we would tier it because we wouldn't expect that our juniors next year would have the twelve hours.
Well, we're talking literally about 25 hours, not sort of like credits or anything like that, literally hours.
Just literally hours.
So six hours a year, something like that.
Correct.
Okay.
I think you want to start. Is that just about National Honor Society?
No requirements now.
Monique, I see your hand up.
Yeah, yeah, that last question, I didn't hear, because I was thinking about the National Honor Society too. Was that a question asked about requirements for that, I didn't hear?
I was just asking if they were required inside the National Honor Society, the school in general.
For SOAR, excuse me?
For SOAR.
Yeah, yeah, it's only in just right now, but. Only in like some clubs that have it, but it's not required for all students.
Okay.
Uh, oh, yeah, I actually also had some concerns about the elective course, and I'm just wondering, you know, again, how far advanced you'd be able to detect and kind of adjust to allow for, yeah, course changes based on enrollment, you know, low enrollment. So I would like to hear a little bit more about how that could be addressed or dealt with. And then I do have concerns about the service requirements, and I just mentioned that as well. And I do think overall, you know, this doesn't sound like a lot of numbers, it doesn't add up to a lot of numbers over four years. I just have some concerns about kind of the compulsory service, generally speaking. So I'd like to, you know, look forward to more discussions about that. And of course, not anti-service at all, it's just the compulsory nature, so I just want to put that out there.
Yeah, it's tough because even though the credit requirement is lower, you know, students are still in school, seven plus hours a day.
Right.
So people are working, you know, potentially tough, but we'll discuss that.
Yeah, definitely, we'll vote for policy in all of my just the last interviews meetings, you could probably do a better job of explaining, schedule a more sort of like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, I just wanted to add on to the inclusion of service hours, I think that's a very important thing. And I know that in the high school, we personally offer a lot of opportunities to get service hours over the helping run something during service day, whether it be just a little tiny program where you're making cards or you're collecting goodie bags. I think there's just so many, so many other clubs, like Key Club used to do a lot of car washes and the Asian Culture Club whenever they almost completed the new year, like there's just so many opportunities to volunteer that help out. And I think that including this into just the community, with the entire high school community would be very helpful for students in general, because a lot of students don't go out of their way to try to look for these things. And I think by having it as a requirement, it'll be really helpful for kind of building our character.
We have study halls, I mean, maybe there's arguably some component of this that students, some students could do during study hall. I mean, if we're talking about something sedentary like, you know, cards or something, so.
To, I just wanted to add, like, you know, in support of whatever you want to say, that my only concern would be that there would be a variety of things available to suit the needs of each student. You know, being that everyone has different strengths and weaknesses, you know, as far as the volunteer hours.
I mean, this would not be, this would be not super structured, that it wouldn't be like, because of like everybody all the freshmen are going to do X service, right? It would be, you present a plan, what you're going to do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, okay, cool.
So somebody, you know, volunteered out in the community, you know, at the senior center on their own just because there's something their family does or goes to the food pantry, that would certainly count as well. It's not that it would have to be structured like, all the freshmen at this time are going to do this or anything like that. But it sounds like too, like we were saying, that there's plenty of opportunities that if students don't have that option outside of school, then there's plenty of in-school fees for those service hours. And I like that to a part of to give back, but also to get involved. Thank you.
I think that's also good for college-minded leadership, and it's also good for. I also want to add, NHS does also tutoring, which you can do during your study halls, you can do during lunch, before school, after school. So there's just a lot of chances for students to really get out there and just help their peers or the community.
Okay, all right, move on to part three.
Part three. We're, I'm sorry, we're not taking questions from the public right now, huh? Public comment will, will come, yeah.
We're getting there.
We're getting there, I'm sorry, it's been a long, yes, I appreciate every piece of patience, it's been a long night. We have a lot, there is a lot going on in the district. And full-day preschool is one of those things, so one of those things. So I'm pleased to share some updates. So we are looking forward to our research base. So myself, Ms. Hopola, and Ms. McNally, Irving principal, have been doing a ton of research on full-day preschool, looking to begin our full-day preschool starting in the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year. Um, we have participated in many, many meetings with the New Jersey Department of Education and other districts to gather information about what, what's working and what's not working. In addition, Ms. McNally and I have actually done site visits on several local childcare facilities. Of the three that got back to us, and we stalked the heck out of them and called and emailed and called and emailed, three got back to us. Noah Zarke is partnering with New Brunswick at this point. Uh, CDC Parker is unfortunately not interested because it doesn't really jive with their business model. And Yellow, uh, Yellow Brick, um, is interested in the partnership, uh, but I'll explain some, um, uh, potential pitfalls that might come with that. But, uh, so there's only one potential partnership that exists out there for what they're calling the mixed delivery model. At Yellow Brick, they offer two classrooms, so they would have two available classrooms. Some of the issues with Yellow Brick, um, would be that we have to, they don't necessarily meet all the requirements by the New Jersey Department of Education for preschool classrooms. So we'd have to complete, um, a waiver and get the waiver approved to use them. Additionally, um, at Yellow Brick, the director is also a teacher for staffing purposes and for her business model. However, the New Jersey Department of Education says that the, if you do a partnership with a childcare facility, the director can't be a teacher. So that might cause an issue with her business model. In addition, uh, if you pay attention to our last board meeting where we approved the architects to do a feasibility study, we are in the process of a feasibility study to identify potential areas at Irving and/or Bartle to add additional classroom space to bring in fully in-house, so that may be a possibility. In addition, we have received quotes, uh, that Financial Facilities will be reviewing tomorrow at their meeting for two modular classrooms that would go outside on the pavement at Irving, uh, to free up two classrooms for preschool. So the two modular classrooms wouldn't be for preschool because that doesn't meet the requirement, but the classrooms inside the building do meet the requirement. So we'd have to move to maybe first grade or kindergarten classrooms to the modular classrooms to open up, uh, the preschool classrooms inside. So what we heard a lot from everybody that we talked to was, they said, please start slow. Start slow with a one-year plan and see how it goes, which is great because that's pretty much all we have the ability to do. Uh, so we'd like to start slow with a one-year plan and see how it goes. Um, Ms. McNally, Ms. Hopola and I would like to recommend to the board, or I guess I would like to recommend to the board, the two modular classrooms for a total of four classrooms for the fall. It would be really, really difficult and problematic to try to partner with any local childcare facility at this time. It's, option one is to do the two modular classrooms so we can up, open up four total classrooms or not do the modular classrooms and only open up two full-day classrooms. So our recommendation is the modular classrooms for a year. And we'd open up four classrooms for the fall, which means that if the board agrees, we could anticipate having space for about sixty students, which is approximately the same number of students that we're serving now with our pre-K program. This does not include ABA, preschool disabled or early intervention students. They're actually from a different funding, they get through a special ed funding, so that's a different type of programming. So that doesn't include the sixty, so that's independent of that. Um, and it's a combination of three and four-year-olds, so we have to open it up to both. So one of the things that Equity and Excellence have been talking about are the enrollment criteria. And again, we'll continue to have these conversations for my E and E group. You'll see that on the upcoming agenda as a part of our continued conversation to make sure that we're, uh, running equal access to, um, our full-day pre-K in the fall. So obviously, our current, we would propose that obviously our current enrolled three-year-olds, which I think are about three open now, would be obviously grandfathered in next year with a spot. Then we would take students eligible for free and reduced lunch. The free and reduced lunch meal program would get the next level of access to the program. And then students that are registered but on the waitlist and not eligible for free and reduced lunch meal program would then be through a lottery system randomly selected to be in the program. What's important to note about a pre-K is that it is rolling admission. So there's often times of movement in, in pre-K where people leave, people come, people go. So, um, you know, if a, a space opens up, the next person starts, so they don't have to wait. And, um, if they're registered and on the waitlist, they don't have to wait at all. They could get a call Friday, start on Monday, they could get on Tuesday and start on Wednesday, it's that fluid. So some of the registration information, the application will be coming out soon. Ms. McNally and I are planning a full campaign in communication, so be on the lookout on, on the Main Street there for a big banner that we're going to post in English and Spanish. Um, February twenty second, twenty twenty three, mark your calendars for parents that are interested at six P M. Ms. McNally and I will be hosting a parent information meeting at Irving, and we will be having a translator in attendance as well because it's very important. So things will be going out in multiple languages. We're really going to make a big push to have the registrations because we actually don't know the size of our universe. So we do want to know how many people are interested in full-day pre-K. Let's gather those numbers so, so that we can start that process. I mean, I anticipate a waitlist, but I'm not even sure because I have no idea who's going to register. Uh, and we're looking at a registration starting in March for a fall start. So I did questions on the first two bullets, I'll do questions on the third bullet. For a full-day pre-K.
If, if I might, uh, just to be clear, the reason we can only have four classrooms is we would have two of the modular classrooms, uh, freeing up two rooms in the school. And then we have, we have only two free classrooms in all of Irving. Um, and, and I think that hasn't, that hasn't been completely clear, but I just want to emphasize that.
It's correct.
We don't have the rooms.
We don't have the rooms, yeah.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to, to thank you and the leadership team for doing all this work. Because it, it wasn't budgeted in your time at the beginning of the year. And you, you really.
That's not your strategic goal.
It's not, it's not strategic plan goal.
Um, are, are, are there going to be parents whose kids are put in the modular classrooms that are going to complain that this is not the same standard as other classrooms? I don't know anything about what these modular classrooms are like.
I anticipate there being some pushback, which is why I'm recommending it, but we might not want to go to. That's why I said you have two options to do the modular classrooms and open up four rooms or not do the modular classrooms and just open up two. And we'll go from sixty students to thirty for full-day pre-K. So you certainly have two options.
If I might, if I might go back far enough and out of the park, and I can tell you, there were modular classrooms, um, back in the day, and, I mean, probably going back into the late seventies and eighties. And, uh, they were opposed, very significantly opposed by the community, members of the community. So this is not going to be, um, an easy thing to convince people that their first grader isn't getting the same education as another first grader who's in, in the building. Um, and it's something the board is going to have to address. But we don't have classrooms, and we do want, in the interests of children who are three and four-year-olds and in the interest of equity, make it available to as many people as possible so that people who don't have the financial wherewithal to send their child to a three or four-year-old program can do it through public school, especially since the state is paying. But it's something the board is going to have to listen to.
Sure, yeah, it's, it's a great opportunity. Is, is it also going to take away the places? Is that, is that where the modular classrooms go?
The modular classrooms would go, not, it's not going to take away the new beautiful, um, uh, area that we have with the equipment, the playground equipment. It's not over there, it's on the, oh, do you see, that's where they park their snow?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so they park in that space. It is where Mr. Luxemburg does take kids sometimes out to play, and sometimes the aftercare program does go and play on that particular pavement area, but there's still the other side with the playground equipment that, that would be there. So you're right, I mean, it does take away, you know, take away space. Um, again, that's why it's part of a larger conversation, but it's why I'm putting it out to the public now and to you all to communicate that it's something that we really have to strongly consider and weigh the options to what we want to do, um, you know, to, to open up, you know, full-day pre-K.
And I think that modular.
Make sure to speak into the microphone, sorry.
I would think that modular trailer, I suppose trailers, are different now than they were back in the days.
Don't call them trailers.
The modular classrooms. Well, we did get, we did get the specs and they're really beautiful with bathrooms inside of them. Now, I haven't actually been inside to see it. I, certainly something the Financial Facilities company, we can go maybe on a whole site visit and check out, uh, modular classrooms because I know other districts aren't using modular classrooms, so maybe we can check out a site visit. If anybody wants to go on a field trip with me, we can check them out and, I mean, take some pictures and get a look at it because I've actually never been inside one. I just saw this, which, by the way, the Financial Facilities, uh, group tomorrow will be reviewing and you'll see the architectural designs of a modular classroom. So that is something that is on our, I knew those coming, so that is on our radar.
Amoni, I can see your hand up here.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, again, thanks, thank you, Christina, as, as, uh, Chris mentioned, just for you and your administration for taking this on. Um, I, I do think we should have, uh, some real education around modular classrooms and what that means as we're talking about now, um, and kind of dispel some of the myths around, um, modular, um, spaces for learning. Um, I think that should be definitely a part of the process in the public awareness raising process as well. Uh, and then I just, I just had a question about this six P M parent meeting on, uh, February twenty second, I believe that is. I'm not sure if you posted about that yet, I'm just wondering, the six o'clock hour might be difficult for working, some working parents to get to, so are any ideas around making that meeting, uh, any information shared at that meeting more accessible?
Yeah, so we're, so this is the first, we're publicizing it tomorrow as our full-on start of our campaign, uh, to, to get it out there. Uh, we could offer a virtual session for parents that want to come in, you know, listen. Uh, I could also, uh, talk to the tech department about videotaping it as well and having the videotape accessible. Um, so we definitely have options to make it, um, accessible to, um, to everybody.
Thank you. I mean, wait, along those lines though, I don't want to divulge too much, but I'm thinking with the new app, the district app, if you're collecting any stat on like how it's been used, and I'm wondering if that's helping in any way to get the word out. Um, just generally speaking about information in the district, um, but that might be a good tool too. If it is, if you find that it is, um, being highly utilized, uh, at this point, just to, uh, again, reach more, reach more families.
I could certainly ask, um, Apogee for some, I know they have that data, so I can ask them for that data.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the preschool part of the presentation?
Okay. All right, one part of the presentation and then public comment, I think, right? Okay, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, it's, uh, we've got a lot going on. Okay, so I wanted to, based on some of the feedback that we received on, um, school start times and then times, I'd like to provide, uh, a little refresher and, uh, address some of the frequently asked questions slash concerns that came, um, through, um, the email. So I just wanted to remind everybody of the purpose of the change, that research overwhelmingly supports the benefit for later school start time for adolescents and, and as close to it, not before eight-thirty start time as possible. In fact, the research is so overwhelming that, to, to my knowledge, there's no research that refutes it, which is really incredible when you talk about social science research that exists out there. In twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, I believe, I think that's what we come up with, yes. Um, we adjusted the high school start time for the first period to be eight forty-one and for A period to start at seven forty-eight. So we didn't have an A period before twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, so that was a new addition as a way to try to meet the later school start time. So this has been on our radar for several, several, several years. Um, and in fact, the change was made during that school year, but no adjustments were made to the middle school at that time. So this obviously was, uh, predated me, I was in the district, but not in, involved in the change in this. But again, you can see that we were able to get the first period class to a later school start time, but the compromise was in A period at seven forty-eight A M, which is its current, those are the current times. Last year in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we attempted to provide more equitable later start times for all high school students because what we were finding was based on our transportation requirements, students that had to take the bus had to get to school so early, almost an hour before the start time, um, and even more so actually, way more than an hour before the eight forty-one A, eight forty-one A M start time. It was like seven twenty, seven twenty-five that they were getting to school. And they would sit in the cafeteria and wait if they didn't take an A period class. So our, our bus students had no choice but to come and sit if they didn't take a class during the period. And so we just found that that wasn't, uh, that wasn't equitable. Last year on June sixth, twenty twenty-two, I presented to the board, uh, I pleaded and begged the board to give me one more year to try to make it happen because with, without adjusting all the buildings, the best we could do was either make it equitable on the start time or equitable on the end time. We couldn't make it both because of the way the other two buildings started and ended and the other requirements set forth by the New Jersey Department of Education. So it was, so that was the problem. Either the students had to come early and sit and wait or at the end of the day, they would have to sit and wait a long, a long time. That was the only other option. So I was, um, really pleased that the board, uh, approved to continue this as a goal and give us another year to figure it out. Um, so we weren't able to achieve that goal with keeping Bartle and Irving's start times the top, the same. So this year, obviously, we were continuing our goal to provide equity for all high school students to access the later start time. That was something that was very important to us. In addition, we would like, we wanted to adjust the middle school schedule so that all students could have a later start time as well. And the reason for that, not only was the research, but some other considerations, including the scheduling for our shared staff, we're a small district with a, a, you know, minimal budget comparatively speaking. So we, um, under financial constraints, we do have to have some shared staff, sometimes for oral language, definitely for music. And so allowing, uh, creating a, the start and end times to alleviate that pressure was, uh, consideration. In addition, no class, no schools could end later than three P M, like I said in my presentation at the last meeting. We worked, we did a backwards design model. And so we ended at three P M and then worked backwards to fill in, to figure out the start times. So that was really important. That has to do with athletics and athletic scheduling, extracurricular activities both in school and outside of school. Those activities that our students belong to outside of school, um, are, uh, are the union contracts. There are several reasons, um, for that. In addition, it was really important for us to maintain our instructional time. And you have to understand too, as there are, so the high school has graduation requirements as the New Jersey Department of Education. Our elementary schools, for example, have the same requirements, not for graduation, but they have a certain number of E L A minutes they have to meet, math minutes they have to meet, uh, phys ed minutes and health minutes that they have to meet. So everything are these mandates, recess, lunch, like there are certain requirements. So a, a day has to be a certain length of time. To shorten that, we wouldn't meet those requirements. In addition, uh, the biggest hurdle is transportation and the New Jersey Department of Education requirements for tiered buses. We have to tier our buses. There's no other way around it. The New Jersey Department of Education will not approve our buses if we don't tier them. We have to show efficiency of the, of those routes, which is, again, to reiterate, um, the bus routes. Now, last time I really simplified it, it is very, very, very complicated. That's why I invited this magazine to the last meeting to help me try to explain it, um, because she's in that world all the time and knows it. It's actually way more complicated than a yellow bus and a blue bus. We have a Merriold route as well that we run, so there's other little routes that we run that are impacted also, but those get really complicated, so I didn't include them. I just included the yellow bus and the blue bus so that people could understand why we have to tier it, how that works. The biggest issue with our tiered system, well, not the biggest issue, it's not an issue. The biggest data point that we have for our buses is that Bartle has a lot of students that get bused. It's about eighty, maybe a little bit more than eighty. And so because of that, they can't all fit on a fifty-two-passenger bus. So we have to provide two buses to Bartle. All the other schools get one bus. So the bus has to go to a school, go, go out, pick up the students, bring them to the school, then go back and do another route, bring them back to school, go back and do another route, bring them back to school. That's what we mean by tiered buses, which was why I put this picture in the presentation to understand that the bus goes somewhere, has to bring students back by a certain time, then go back out, get another group of students, bring them back. And so the model that we proposed. And so the model that we proposed provided the solution to the problem, which was equitable times for the high school students to have access, because now those students have a choice, which they didn't have in the past. They no longer have to sit in the cafeteria at seven twenty-five in the morning and wait until eight forty-one to start school. If they don't have an A period, they can take a longer sleep time. Or they can get on the bus with their middle school peers and go to school. So again, it, it, it gets complicated. We have to divide it up too because of, so that's why Bartle has to, they have to go to Cedar Lane and that area, and then it also has to go to pick up Forest Flood and there's some other, I didn't list all the stops, but there are plenty of additional stops. The, the, it's a long walk for our students up, up Cedar and, and up in that area to, to trek down if we were going to have them trek all the way down to the bottom of River Road to, to get on a bus. And for, and again, it causes some complications for Merewald. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty involved. So that was hence the, the idea of, I tried to make it very simplified as best as I could for people to understand the tiered concept. I can't just run a bus to the high school and that's it, and a bus to the middle school and that's it. They, they have to tier.
Christina, tier means they share, one bus has multiple routes.
One bus has multiple routes. And that's what we are required to do for efficiency. Merewald and, and others, so we have a couple other smaller routes that don't have to be tiered and the DOE approves it because a fifty-two passenger bus can't get up there. So apparently when they develop up under the road of some of those developments, our fifty-two passenger bus can't actually get up there, so we have to use a smaller van or bus to get those routes. So that's why it gets a little bit more complicated. So some of the frequently asked questions, a question that I got in the board got frequently was, why can't three or all of the buildings end at the same time or pick their own times? That would be great, however, we had to consider the impact on scores, extracurricular activities, and interests of students and staff based on the survey data from the spring of 2022. So we did put a survey out last spring to parents, students, and staff. It was really flawed and I have no problem honing that. And part of, part of the reason why is because we didn't know the times. We just said, hey, you want to start a later start time? How do you feel about that? And overwhelmingly, the only piece of information that we got out of there that was actually useful to help us was that nobody wanted to end school later than three o'clock. And people said, yes, I'd like a later start time as long as I don't have to end later. So we thought collectively plus or minus ten minutes, like three o'clock seemed to be like the nice cutoff. Anything past three o'clock, I think the students would have a bit. There, yes, I'm getting a couple, I'm getting a couple head nods to my right here. So that was sort of the, that was our cutoff there. And we also have to consider staffing. Another thing too is that students cannot arrive before the staff. So we have to consider that as well. There were some people proposing that the students, if we adjust the start times and shift things around, but they can't arrive before the staff and they can't stay, like the staff can't leave and the students can't still be there. So that's part of the whole thing too, when we talk about the HPA contract and, and our staffing needs as well. And again, we have to tier our routes to make multiple routes. I can't, I can't emphasize that enough. Another frequently asked question, why are we making changes for transportation when these students represent a small number of our student population? Or is an alternative to get the students transported? Students that receive courtesy transportation should have the same options as those that do not receive courtesy transportation. I think that's my belief and I believe that philosophically the board members agree to that as well. I put in, I linked, the presentation will be available tomorrow on the district website. But I linked the New Jersey Code, eighty-one blissful pages of reading for anybody interested on the code for transportation. And we provide courtesy transportation to students that live on a hazardous route, i.e. River Road and those in that area. I will say, I know we said this at a previous board meeting, I believe Marilyn spoke about it, we have been working with the township and the county to create safer routes to walk to school. That, that's out of my control, but I am, we are working collectively to try to do that. There's been some change in leadership. So we will pick up where we left off with the new administration there. And hopefully they can connect us to the county and we can have those meetings to see if we can create some safer routes for students to walk to school. We are trying to explore all other options. However, those things take time and so hopefully we can get to a better place. So why are we making it for a small number? But we have to be equitable and we're making sure our students that happen to be over in those areas, which also includes some of our Section Eight housing, some low, very low income families, some students of color. So I think that we want to make sure that we're doing right by all of our students. Another question was why were parents at Bartle or Irving not given a survey about the change in times? That's a very great question. Once the central leadership team and staff determined that the only option that would work best for all four, once we decided that the option, there was only one option that would work best for all four buildings, it became really clear that a survey would probably split parent input based on individual family needs. So we didn't want to create a situation that could potentially cause tension within the district. If we could have been able to present multiple options, it would have allowed us to garner additional input, but because we only had one option, we just moved forward with that option. And that is why we didn't survey Bartle or Irving families. In addition, we did get some questions about students needing more sleep at Irving and Bartle, and we recognize that that is incredibly important. Parents also are concerned about childcare after school for an earlier end time. That is a completely valid concern as well. So like I said in my original presentation, we will be providing staff at Irving from two forty to three fifteen for students that walk home with their older siblings. So we recognize that that slight shift now causes that, that issue, but we tackled that by providing staff to watch those students. In addition, we will provide education on healthy sleep habits and health and wellness education. In addition, we will support families and students on a case-by-case basis. All of our families need individualized and personalized support. Some of the things we even do now include text or call reminders. So we use our new communication system has a text message feature that we've been using. Some of our staff use Remind 101 to text students and tell them to get up and get to school. Students support each other. We had a lot of great success with students being tardy to the high school by them texting their friends for wake-up calls. We offer breakfast after the bell as a way to encourage students to come and have healthy habits. So there's a lot of ways that we offer support. We also offer intervention and referral services and 504s for medical or other situations like that. So if students really have, you know, sleep pattern disabilities, insomnia and things like that, we want to make sure that we provide those supports. So we do have students in, on intervention and referral services and 504 accommodations to meet the needs of those students as well. There have been questions about before and after care. We are going to be implementing an option. Apparently it was loosely an option, it wasn't publicized, but it, we were going to publicize it and put it in a handbook formally, an option for one hour pay per day at a rate of eighty-four dollars a month. So if you just need one hour after school instead of the whole time for aftercare, which I think goes to, I think, six o'clock or something like that, you could pay just the one hour. So from two fifteen to three fifteen or something like that, you could just pay for one hour of aftercare if needed versus having to pay for the entire duration of it. And then also there's no additional, somebody asked about that fifteen minutes, if they were going to be charged extra in aftercare for that fifteen minutes for before aftercare, the answer is no. So if you sign up for aftercare, it's for the time in which aftercare exists. It's not, we wouldn't include that as an additional charge. So I will open up to the board for any questions or comments and then we can move on to public comment. And I again, appreciate everybody's patience. Thank you.
People on the board have, first let's see your hand.
But I, I'll just make one comment too, just about some language that I saw on Facebook where I, I saw people saying, well, you know, some people said fifteen minutes is not that important. I, you know, I, I went to a couple meetings about this issue in the fall. I, I never saw anyone, heard anyone in the district, on the board or in the administration say anything like that. I mean, everyone I know is having breakfast with their kids, if they have it at all, in five or 10 minutes in the morning. If you're sitting down, you're lucky. So, you know, you take fifteen minutes away, you know, that's the time that they don't, you know, don't get breakfast. So I, I never saw anybody, heard anyone in the district say anything other than, you know, acknowledge that this would be really difficult for some families.
And, you know, I think Marilyn, you said this in one of your responses, you know, it's certainly not necessary the board members have just kids in the school in this circumstance, but it might be helpful to know that we do have at least three board members, maybe exactly three board members who have little kids that will be affected by this change or have grandkids who may get to school every day. So just so folks know, this is a pain that, you know, we will personally feel ourselves in addition to imposing it on the rest of you for what we believe is a good cause.
More comments? Before I put a comment in, I also know they have a process. We could have done a job with process to this point. We're not going to put that out there after that. I think that we can work on, improve our communication. Ironically, we're going to be very struggling, how we didn't do a great job on this particular process, but we will learn from it and move forward and do better in the future. However, with all that said, result was, a, result was process is going to establish that would be benefit when we created for the school, in my opinion, overall district. It's going to prove equity, it's going to, and ultimately we charged Dr. Nicosia, the administration who was leading this board role, and they have done it. And, and again, maybe process could have been better. We could certainly have discussed the last time and voted this time, but regardless, this is where we are and we are in the open schedule that really will benefit from students. Oh, Michelle, I'm sorry. Michelle, you want, you want to allow, try and add a report?
Yes, I would love to, thank you. What I wanted to say was that as the board representative to the Board of Health for a few years, I heard a lot about the importance of later school start times for adolescents and teenagers. And so I wondered, I'm not the representative of the board to, you know, the Board of Health at this point, so I wondered if the credit representative had, had heard any feedback about this change because it was, when we brought up at every single meeting, the priority that they wanted us to, you know, take to, to change the start times, which miraculously, you know, we, we worked on and done. So I just wanted to know if that board member would have any feedback for us.
Is that you, Chris, or Jan, to be, I was going to be.
Thank you. You have the microphone, please. Thank you.
So, it was all.
Okay.
So we, we met right before the last board meeting when this was announced, so I'll definitely bring that up in the meeting.
I was, I was here for two or three years. The Board of Health makes no, typically no resolutions about anything, but over the years they've made a resolution in 2015, another one in either seven, 2017 or 18 on exactly this subject in the strongest terms. And I had to fight my way out of there, to get out of there alive. It was so upset, I'm only joking, but it was so upset that we didn't have later start times for our high school and middle school students.
Okay. If you guys want to add on that, so we're going to open a public comment. And I'll say another part of Board of Education, welcome to public participation and as we respond to your comments. Board policies 0164 and 0167, establish and regulate writing in public, course of page, public meetings. So the way we're, as we have, oh, every month, this part of public comment is three minutes per speaker. Linda will keep time for us and let us know when three minutes is up. Dr. Nicosia always takes notes during public comment, and she will do the same today. So we won't be responding to individuals, but at the end of public comment, if there's information that, that we can add, she will certainly do that while I don't have to add. So if you would like to speak, you're going to raise your virtual hand, or we have some people in the room here in person, and we're going to let them speak first if they're looking to speak, and then we'll move to our, our hybrid community. Oh, and simply say your name and address when you start speaking. So our first speaker is in the room, so if you want to start.
John Kovak, 206 North Third Avenue. Board of Education undoubtedly at considerable expense intends to hire a youth safety specialist. A substantial part of this job will be to implement an unproven alternative to discipline known as restorative practices or restorative justice. The program is already proceeding at full steam, so this would constitute a costly expansion. According to recent 2020 articles by Zach Zeski and Rutherford and by Weber and Greenaga, not a single study on restorative justice is sufficiently rigorous to satisfy standards of proof in the educational field. Current evidence to support this practice is limited and inconclusive at best. The board's goal of making disciplinary action conform to percentages of racial demographics is a symptom of a larger problem, a massive bait and switch of the true meaning of the word equity. Properly defined, equity means fairness, a seat at the table, equal opportunity, not equality or equal outcome. It is wrong to obsessively focus on demographic equality to the exclusion of ability, self-control, self-discipline, dedication to learning, and excellence. This turns education into a zero-sum game that divides us based on race, ethnicity, and religion rather than unites us as Americans. Like it or not though, we are Americans and millions of immigrants come here wanting to become Americans. Students who succeed in school, like the immigrants who built successful lives here, discipline themselves and work hard. Social, emotional learning, culturally responsive teaching, linguistic justice and related pedagogy teach students that our country and its institutions in which they can succeed are set against them. They teach activism, disruption, decolonization, and problematization rather than reading, writing, math, and science. Students are thus provoked into resentment, anger, antisocial behaviors, and disciplinary problems. This constellation of inappropriate pedagogy and the abuse of language and meaning it brings is epitomized by this board's efforts to compel elementary school teachers to teach from a book that claims is racist and white supremacist. April Baker Bell's book urges teachers to convert students into activists conditioned to disrupt, decolonize, and problematize the English language. This is teaching disfigured by ideology. I therefore ask the board to hire a safety specialist only if this can be justified with credible evidence to end the Baker Bell book project and most importantly, to stop assaulting excellence in the name of equity.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody else in the room that wants to speak? If you have any other questions.
Shannon Stevens, 256 South Nine. Oh, good evening. I came to this meeting to discuss Highland Park High School offering an AP Statistics course. There is a need for an AP Statistics course at the high school. Statistics is useful in a wide variety of disciplines and in everyday life, and it is arguably more useful for most people than calculus. Now, I'm a calculus teacher. The high school offers two AP Calculus classes and multivariable calculus, but doesn't offer AP Statistics. There are juniors at the high school with multivariable calculus who don't have an advanced, advanced math class available at the high school in their senior year. There are juniors in calc PC who'd rather take AP Stats than multivariable calculus. There are juniors in calculus AB who'd rather take AP Stats than calculus PC. There are students in CB classes who would like to take AP Statistics. The needs and interests of all these students could be met by the high school offering AP Statistics. My son Kai is a junior and he's had discussions with the administration about the high school offering AP Statistics next year. Kai has formally gathered twenty-one signatures of students interested in taking AP Stats next year. The interest among the students is there. In a recent email, Dr. Nicosia said that the district is interested in offering AP Statistics. My problem though is with the proposed timeline. The earliest administration said they can offer AP Stats since the fall of 2024. I think Highland Park High School can and should offer an AP Statistics course this fall. There are various steps to, to take to make sure that happens, but they're all doable in the seven months we have before the next school year begins. Highland Park is not a big bureaucratic school district. It is a small district that can be nimble in making changes that the board, administration, and students all want to see. The board, of course, would need to approve the course. AP Statistics is a mature, popular AP course that's standard in many American high schools. AP Statistics is a mature, popular AP course that's standard in many American high schools. The college board has been offering AP Statistics since 1997. Last May, 219,000 students took the AP Statistics exam. One immediate obstacle is that scheduling meetings for the current juniors begin next week. If the board approves the course, say later in February, I don't know. Maybe the students who would want to take it could then go back to their counselors to revise their course choices for the fall. I don't know. The high school has teachers who can teach AP Statistics. The AP teacher could get signed up for some course to help prepare to teach the class. There's time now between, and now, there's time between now and September to write the curriculum for the course. Let's bring AP Statistics to Highland Park High School in December.
Can we get a traffic light? Do we have a traffic light, a mobile light?
I'm Nicole Staniello, 208 North Third Ave. Oh, sorry. Nicole, Nicole Staniello, 208 North Third. I'm here to speak about the later start times. From what I appreciate you, you know, rehashing what you previously had discussed, but it sounds like there's still is not an equitable solution for all students. Focus seems to be just on the high school. And while I sympathize, and I don't make the studies that show that later start time does help, I do also want to say that only focusing on the high school students at sixth grade, sixth graders as well, is neglectful of the younger students who will be suffering, who will have to get up, yes, that 15 minutes earlier, if not more, to be able to make it to school. I've spoken with my own children about this, who are students. One one is a part of student, the other one will be a part of student next year, and they're both upset about it because one of them is already struggling because it's too early for her. I do sympathize with the high schoolers. I also was a teen. I understand how difficult it is to go to bed at night and wake up earlier during the day, but it is something that is, has been doable for, ever since school has been started. So it also does not take into account that the younger students are going to be getting less sleep. My children go to bed at 7:30 at night and still struggle to get to school at 8:05 in the morning on a regular basis. It doesn't take into consideration students who are neurodiverse, who have sleep challenges, who have executive dysfunction in the morning, who don't necessarily even qualify for a public or IP or any of those things. It's, sorry. I did hear, I believe your name is Cruz. I'm so sorry, I can't see that far. You mentioned that it was a, there, this was not a good way to communicate with the younger, parent of the younger students. And I think that the best way to better that communication is start listening to us now because nothing would be all, but everybody thought it was a good idea to make a later start time for high schoolers. We all thought it was a great idea, but we did not realize it was going to come at the harm of our own, of the younger children. And I don't think that it's fair to sacrifice their mental health, their education, their abilities to focus in class because they're exhausted. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move to our virtual, hands are raised. I just grabbed it down as I saw hands coming up. So Amina, I see that name on the screen. If you want to speak first, introduce yourself and what's your address.
Hi, I'm Amina Jeffrey, 25 North Six. And I, the person who spoke before me just said it perfectly. You know, my child struggles to get to school every morning, and the time that I have with her in the evening is really precious. We know that there's tons of studies that say that the time that children get to spend with their parents is also incredibly valuable. And I feel like that wasn't taken into account as this change was made for elementary school children. It results in them having less time with the parents in the morning as well as struggling, instead of, as well as struggling to get them to sleep earlier at the night before. Students also have activities, you know, as a working parent, I work till about 5 o'clock, then there's some sort of activity, then there's dinner, then there's bath, then there's bed. And, you know, it feels very sneaky, deceptive, the way that the communication has been that the school timing will be delayed, that school time will be, school times will be late or voting on school times being later. And there was no mention of the elementary schools starting any earlier. And so that just feels, you know, sneaky and deceptive, unfair to the parents to not have a chance to, to have an opinion and have their thoughts heard as it relates to something so significant. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Abby, may I have your address?
Hi, this is Abby Stern Hardinow. I live on Harper Street in Highland Park. I have some questions and comments about actually two different things, about the start times, but also about the pre-K program. So a couple of comments about the start times is, you know, I've heard it a lot tonight that it's 15 minutes earlier, but I do want to point out that a lot of kids will be transitioning to Irving for the first time. I remember my daughter did daycare as early as I possibly can, and that's 9:00 AM. We are not out of the norm. I see many, in fact, most families arriving after the breakfast time, and some do get there for the breakfast that's provided, which is great. But it's not out of the norm, so it's not just 15 minutes. This is already a transition, and so adding an additional time on that, I just want to make sure that that's part of the discussion for the children transitioning into the school system for the first time. One solution that was proposed, and I appreciate hearing kind of the thought processes there, is that students can get a 504. I'm new to the school system. I've been learning about this, but from what I understand, this is an extremely long and complicated process, and you can't just, from what I understand, there are certain situations where you can get an IEP or 504, and you can't just get it because your child is struggling with sleep. That's not a criteria that I think would apply. So I just don't think that's necessarily a valid solution to be given for families. I'm also wondering if you looked at research on how early start times affect younger children. I started to look at that a little bit. I completely agree and understand why it was done for older children, but I agree that this process didn't give the public time to give input. And from some information that I started to look at, there's also impact on children's academic and social performance for younger ages as well. The research isn't as widespread because it's been focused on older children, but I think there's research there as well, and I don't think that should be ignored. I know you're saying this is all my solution you found, but again, this felt like a rushed process. Maybe, you know, if the public can have a little bit more time to have some input and, you know, that is kind of the purpose of these public meetings, at least as I understand it. Typically, I thought there would be a first and second reading, but from what I understand, at the last meeting, it was introduced and voted on right away. So as a member of the public and for other people, we don't really have the time to digest this and also give valid feedback. So just shifting gears, if I have a little more time, I don't know if I do. But for, and I can come back if.
Yeah, one fifteen second for that, Abby.
Okay, well, I have some questions about the pre-K program as well, so I'll just come back separately for that.
Okay, thank you. Elizabeth, if you want to.
Thank you, yeah. Elizabeth, welcome here. I live on North Seventh in Highland Park. My son is at Bartle, and I really just want to echo what everyone else said. I completely agree. It really feels like the administration and the board were really quite dishonest. I knew that there had, there was consideration of later start times for the high school, which obviously I was, I am in supportive. I had no idea that it was on the table to have significantly earlier start times for Irving and Bartle. I reject the idea that this is a zero-sum game where if we, you know, follow the signs for the high school students, that means that we are not going to follow the signs for the younger students. The fact is, is this is going to be really disastrous for a lot of the kids at Bartle and Irving. My son, we can't get to Bartle by 8:00 AM, not for lack of trying, but the fact that you are proposing education about sleep and like healthy habits to me just shows that like, there's a real disconnect between like our experiences and what you all think our experiences are. I don't need education about that my son needs a full night's sleep and when he can go to bed. I need a start time that, you know, works for kids who are his age. I'll say with the 504, I mean, my son has had an IEP for years. I've never been told that, you know, a later start time for him was in the cards or, you know, was a possibility. But that's really neither here nor there because in effect, what this is going to mean for us next year is he's going to lose probably about a half hour of schooling every day. And we're definitely not the only family because, you know, rushing my child in the morning, having him get less sleep only sets him up. To have, you know, a terrible school day isn't good for his health. So that's, that would probably get out of my three minutes.
Thank you. Sarah?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, hi, Sarah Pixley. I'm Three Green Avenue. And very, very new to all this. My daughter just entered kindergarten, and, you know, just to say at a high level, I absolutely respect the job of public servants. It's not easy. I can hear it in you trying to figure out the gymnastics and the trade-offs. You know, being practical, while physically responsible, certainly appreciate the physically responsible component. You know, with that, just echo everyone and what they were saying. The concern here is just, you know, how it relates to lower school time changes. And of course, by admission, conversations with Christina Nicosia. Input was gathered from my school parents. It wasn't used to inform the process. Lower school families were not consulted. And it's just, it's a concern, you know, as community-serving individuals. And so, you know, again, appreciate the candor in, you know, the front superintendent specifically stating the input collected was not very useful, quote unquote, and did not have the exact times. The responses were not helpful in the order to meet the goal. And so again, appreciate the candor, but it begs the question, follow up. Why is it acceptable to have no input as it relates to the inequitable potential impact on our most vulnerable lower school students and families? I just want to say, as a survey methodologist, and I'm happy here to donate my time to ensure the right surveys are used at the right time for the right people. So we don't have to choose this again because we just did it wrong. It's a really unacceptable answer moving forward. But I can understand looking back, but moving forward, let's solve this. And, you know, all the communications as others have mentioned, it's later start time was kind of how it was addressed. And, you know, I think some may say it's only 15 minutes earlier, you have six months to prepare. But actually, what concerns me the most is the process and how it was approached. And so to a totally observer like myself, the misaligned communication and lack of community input feels either intentional or just negligent. And so, you know, I think we need to make, again, like, if the reason for this was we need to make this change out of fiscal necessity, given our goal was narrowly focused on upper school students, you know, we couldn't use any of your input. Let's not have conversation upfront. We can empathize with you, making the tough trade-offs. We can make sure you're focusing in the right areas in a way that's not critically affecting sacrificing our most vulnerable population. So the point is, let's move forward. Yeah. Can I just land on one more thing? Which is because of the non-transparent communication, I'd love if we could commit to sending out another email titled properly what's really happening, just so those with earlier school students. Actually, no, because I actually think they don't just because of the way it's been communicated. And I think importantly, when it comes to the process moving forward, it would be really great, because input was really gathered, if we could commit to publishing something like, hey, every three, six, nine months, we're going to, we're going to publish attendance and tardiness so everyone knows compared the before and after, so we can really as a community know if it's working or that we're, we're at, or we're at risk. And I think that'll help us all moving forward if we know what to expect to make sure that it's not a big problem.
Thank you. I think that was that. Andrea, next?
Hi, Andrew Alexander, 116 North Third Avenue. I just want to echo what everybody else has been saying about the proposed new start times. I, you know, I heard your presentation. I understand this is very complicated. I understand there are a lot of moving parts to it, but I just wish there was another way. I wish the district can find another way. Because I have a child who can barely make it to Irving at 8:30, and next year he'll be at Bartle, and I don't know how I'm going to get him there at 7:45 in the morning. My daughter, who's at Bartle now, is either late or barely making it there. And, you know, this, I don't think it's equitable to make one group of students start later and one group, or it's not equitable, make one group of students start earlier so another group of students can start later. I feel like this doesn't take into account the situation of many working parents where we get home at 6 o'clock, we make dinner. You know, my kids, teachers tell me they're supposed to be reading 20 minutes a night, so we're trying to do homework with them. And then, you know, bath and bedtime, and we get them to bed as early as humanly possible, but they are just exhausted in the morning. My other big concern is especially the, the kids at Bartle already lost so much foundational instructional time during COVID. And I know a lot of them are still really behind. And I know the studies show that high school kids need more sleep, but I also understand that tired kids can't learn. And I feel like making the Bartle kids get up even earlier means they're going to be exhausted when they go to school in the morning, and it's going to make it harder for them to learn. And if they're late, they're losing additional instructional time. And I just don't think, I don't think any kid in this district can afford to be using their time in the classroom, but I especially think that the Bartle kids lost so much during COVID of their very basic early learning stages, like learning how to read and learning math. These kids missed out on a year and a half of that, and they're still trying to catch up. So I just, like, I just hope the district can revisit this and try to find another way. And I also am concerned about the idea that we can just try this out for a year and see how it goes, and see how many kids are late, and see how many kids fall further behind. Because I just don't think these kids, I don't think we can take that risk. I think we really should be prioritizing the sleep of all of our children in the district, believe. I just, I just want to say, I hope this can be revisited. I understand the bus contracts aren't finalized. I know a lot went into this. I know you've been looking at this for more than a year. But also, the communication was all centered on the fact that high school kids were going to get to sleep later, and I didn't understand that that meant that my kids would have to get up earlier, or we all would have been here a lot earlier in the process speaking to you about this. So thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. I'm sorry, can I ask your name? Guzadi? Same number?
Yes, yes, that's okay, yeah. Hi. So, good evening, everyone. This is Guzadi, 273 South 10th Avenue. So I'm a parent of a Bartle and Irving kids, and I really have like major concerns about the vast decision of starting Bartle and our schools at an earlier time. Because they, what I believe is they already have like really early starts compared to other school districts. And getting enough sleep is vital for all kids and especially for like younger ones who attend from pre-K to primary school. So in addition, many other parents are genuinely concerned about moving to school start time to earlier as it not, I believe, limits the parents, but also takes away the right of young students to be healthy and to better focus on their educational materials in the class. What I understand is like, I, I just don't get me wrong. I'm not against to, for, you know, middle school or the high school students start later, but so it shouldn't be by sacrificing to, for Bartle or Irving school students because what I believe is all children need sleep. And this, and I believe that this change will be really has a bad, you know, impact on Bartle and Irving schools. And because we are already having really big struggle in the morning to make it on time for Bartle. We are barely making it, and now this decision I was, are asking us to make it even earlier. And which I believe that my kids will be really, really exhausted and really in a very good, in a bad mood in the morning. And I don't think that it's going to be, you know, helpful. And I, I, I just listened to, you know, the whole presentation, and I understand your concerns about middle school, high school, but I also want you to understand that it will be really bad impact in our kids as Bartle and Irving families. And I also have another complaint about the process not being transparent to us because, you know, I, we are aware that you send stories to the, to the middle and high school families, but we but we also want to be, you know, uh, be involved because we also are the families and we also got affected by the changes. So, I, I just strongly want to believe that, you know, you, you will reconsider this and find a way like will work for both us, for every student, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Abby, I think you're right too. I also have a hand, so let me, I see yours.
Am I allowed to speak again?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
Uh, I see we're just at the end, so. Okay, I see one more hand here also. Abby, Abby at the end, you're welcome to come back at the end for public comment, um, which is under the, at that point, okay?
Sure.
We could let it talk after this one person, but just tell them if they want to talk now for three minutes. They've gotta talk, and Abby can talk one more time for three minutes, and then we're moving on.
Okay.
She sure have to wait for the whole.
Okay, all right, we're gonna do it this way. I see, I see one person who, um, his hand is up, and then Abby, if you want to come back on, uh, for one more three minute time, and then we're gonna want to, uh, this is our committee, okay, thank you. Uh, so, what's the name, Billton on there? Want to introduce yourself?
Yes, hi, thank you. Um, uh, and sorry for jumping in there, Abby. Um, Peter Billton, um, four two two Cedar Avenue. I wanna share as a different perspective, but as a high school parent, um, I was very pleased to see that they were able to accommodate a later start time. And the explanation from, like Nikosia today was very helpful to understand the reasoning that went into this decision and the restructuring and the limitations of the state, um, transportation and busing law. Um, I wanted to share a perspective though, that I think part of the, um, challenge comes from the high school having an A period, which I feel in and of itself, right, we talked about, Dr. Nikosia talked about how that was inevitable for students who live on the other side of the road or tracks to have to get to school early, even if they don't have an A period. What's also unfair for students who are in, um, music programs that are not integrated to have to get up early and get to school, other students for the A period. I mean, that's in, in place right now, I'm in somewhat of a unique situation, and I have two children in the high school. So I need to see one child get up early and be very unhappy about getting up early just to enjoy the music programs that are important to them while another child sleeps in and gets to school earlier. So, I, I don't know why the, the A period structure wasn't reconsidered as part of this process that might make things a little bit easier in terms of scheduling buses, or maybe it wouldn't have, uh, not having to match things up. But I wanted to share that I still feel like the A period structure is not ideal, and I wish that those, uh, early class programs were better integrated for the rest of the day.
Thank you. Um, and Abby, you're back to you for our last comment during this period.
Thank you, um, so again, Abby's starting from now. Um, I have some questions and comments about the pre-K program. I wanna start just by saying thank you so much for everything that you're doing to make this happen. It's going, it's really incredible, and I am very, very excited whether or not my child ends up getting into it. Um, I think it's a great thing for the whole community. Um, so a question that I have is, um, you talked about Yellow Brick Road, um, potentially working if you get a waiver, and I'm just wondering, is it also possible that it will be more than sixty students? If there is a way to get it to work with Yellow Brick Road? Um, I think that that should still be pursued as much as possible, um, if there is the, the, a chance to, um, include more students. Um, I'm also wondering, um, I know you said you didn't hear back from other daycares. I would really, um, I, I hope maybe I can help make some connections if there are some. I, I have connections at a couple of different local daycares, I really hope you continue to pursue this to open up the program to as many, uh, as many families and students as possible. So please don't fully give that up, um, and I'm happy to be a resource there. If there's any way I can help, I'll try to send a follow up email. Um, another question is, can there be a priority? I know that not every family's gonna get in, but can there be a priority for families who have one child in Irving? Um, if they have another child who is, uh, three or four years old, to, um, have them have a priority on the list? Specifically, um, actually relating to these earlier start times, it's going to be incredibly difficult to juggle separate drop offs, especially with the earlier start time. That's, um, you know, adding a big extra complication. So I think considering, um, if you can consider having, um, some priority, obviously not over the other priority groups, but maybe a third level of priority, go to families who have another child already in Irving in K through two, I guess, um, if they have a child who is old enough for pre-K. Um, also to mitigate some of this earlier start time to make it more manageable for the families, um, of multiple children, multiple young children who are really gonna struggle with, uh, again, this transition to the earlier start time. Um, with regards to the modular classrooms, I just, sure, sure. Um, I just was gonna say with regards to the modular classrooms, I really hope this doesn't, um, keep you from moving forward. I have full confidence that they'll be up to standards, um, and that, um, all of the support will be given. I think the, the teachers and the community and the family is the most important, um, not specifically the space, although I'm sure, as you said, the space, I am not super concerned. So I really hope that you prioritize the equity of expanding the program as much as possible and not the concern, um, about preference of, of classrooms, thank you.
Thank you. We are gonna move on now to, uh, committee reports. There will be another public comment session at the end of our, of our business, of business part remaining. So, um, at that point, anybody that wants to speak, the first time we're in, that's welcome to do that. Uh, we're gonna move on to curriculum and instruction, Allison, that's you.
Uh, curriculum instruction has not met since the last meeting, we are gonna meet tomorrow. Um, the second item on the agenda is, uh, resolution to approve field trip requests that are attached. And the third is a resolution to accept the memorandum of understanding between the Highland Park Public School District and Alphatare USA for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year, which is attached. And that is for the, uh, remote pilot certification for the students aged sixteen plus program that was talked about earlier.
Um, everyone excellent?
Uh, well, of course, we have nothing new to report, we haven't met since our last meeting, I believe we're meeting on the sixteenth.
Okay, please, thank you. Uh, finance facility, first.
Uh, yeah, we, we didn't meet last week because of a small, small number of items. Uh, so before, before I forget, I'll, I'll be, um, ruling number seven, which has to be voted on, uh, tonight. Uh, so number one, uh, number two, the bill is, number three, the travel, uh, reimbursements, uh, in the drive. Um, four, we already talked about the, the drone, um, item as part of the new initiative, which is really exciting. Um, I'll come back to the first item, four, but four is the, um, the, the money that comes through us to the non-public schools for their, uh, technology. Uh, it's not part of our budget, so we have an obligation to, to handle the money for them. Uh, number six, the, we're increasing the, uh, full day and half day long term teacher rates because, uh, we, we need to attract teachers and be competitive with other districts. And, uh, seven is the new, um, contract for the grounds awarded to Pritchard. That actually saves us some money compared to what Italian was costing us, um, so that's good news. And, uh, Christina, I, I forgot to ask you, um, on the first target, number four, exactly what that was.
Uh, so that's, um, a mentoring service that we're providing, um, for the high school. That's actually gonna be talked about in curriculum instruction tomorrow, it's just the way it works. But, uh, it's a really great service for Title One funding to provide mentoring, which is a really awesome program. Um, so we'll, um, you'll hear about it more next time for curriculum instruction, but essentially provides mentoring for high school students that qualify for Title One. Um, they get field trips, everything is all included, direct school, after school mentoring, it's really amazing.
Any questions?
Are we gonna vote on number seven?
Should we do that now?
I'd like to move number seven.
A second.
Ms. Castaldon?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, Matt, and Nicole?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Rizovich?
Yes.
Ms. Fordyce?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move on, um, to personnel communication. Okay, just a second, um, I've been remiss in not sending out my minutes, but we did meet. Second, will I try to find when we met? Can we get, um, if you're ready first? Um, there's not too much to say here publicly, uh, about what we discussed at the meeting. Um, let's see. We talked a little bit about, uh, how the administration wanted to equalize the salaries for the safety specialists of the two schools, and that was the reason for the sidebar that we discussed last time. We had no new policies. Uh, I will take those minutes out to you guys as soon as possible, so you can read the other exciting details. In terms of our agenda, let's see here, um, almost everything here is self-explanatory. We have some resignations, goodbyes rooms from Corbin School, um, hello as well, Miss F T. There are a lot of references, maybe I'll come down and not read everybody. There is a correction, number nine, uh, there's a misspelling of Marianne from Suda's name, uh, the L should be deleted. Welcome to her. Uh, welcome to Arlington Burrell, one of our, is he, is he a graduate? He's one of our former students, yeah? Welcome, Arlington, um, okay. We have, uh, professional development in, oh, I'm killing him. Okay, moving on, thirteen, weight room, fourteen, fifteen. Okay, everything is pretty self-explanatory. Let me ask, um, Christina, I think you talked about mathematics parent night already. Could you remind me what, um, which parents that's directed for? Is that for everyone in the district, or?
It's for Bartle parents.
For Bartle parents, okay. Oh, yep, I see, it says Bartle, and involves childcare, so it's probably not the high school. All right, so I hope people will come to that because, you know, it's just, it's really interesting what we've been working on with the math curriculum. So, please come if you can, um, I wonder if that's something that could also be videotaped potentially, if released in the presentation, could be made available to parents who can't get there at six.
I'm not sure what the night entails, no, it's, uh, my guess is it might be like Centers and Stations, if I had to guess, but I don't know, I could reach out to, um, Miss Nap and Miss Val Zone's, it's, uh, their, their program and ask them.
Okay.
So it's like a normal presentation per se.
I see, yeah, that'd be hard to replicate on the internet.
Right.
Um, I mean, if there are handouts about course thing, that might be useful. Um, and then we had S E L parent night on March twenty-ninth, I see that is also at Bartle. Um, same thing would be great, if there are handouts or anything that could be shared on any event, that'd be fantastic. And that's just to sort of fill parents in on what, what the district's up to?
Yeah, last year, I don't, for those that attended, we did some virtual S E L, um, parent workshops. Um, and so this year we're continuing them. We got a lot of great feedback, but they wanted them in person, um, to give parents support to mirror the work that we're doing on social emotional learning and the language and, and the resources to parents so to piggyback and streamline the communication between school and home and giving parents more strategies to help with their children at home.
That's great, that should be really helpful with, you know, some of our, our discipline issues, right? We want parents to be able to explain to the children what, what the school is asking of you.
Right.
You know, the school says this, that's, you know, this is what the school needs. So I appreciate, yeah, we're doing that, and that is all I have. Obviously, ready and willing to hear questions, or, 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 or. Questions? Yeah?
Quick question?
Yeah.
I want to, quick question on the, um, math parent, mathematics parent night. Is it at the same night as the, uh, other parent meeting that I think was addressing, cause, uh, okay, is that a conflict? Because I think they're both gonna be targeting, um, inclusive about Bartle parents, correct? I just kinda noted that, I'm not sure again, if there is a conflict of target.
Yeah, I guess.
Just put it out there, maybe.
Yeah, I'll look into that, Ms. McNally just sent me an email saying, I'm doing it this week. One night are you available to attend, and since we have some Board of Ed Finance Fund meetings coming up, good times for the Finance Committee, uh, my, my evening swats were very limited, so I gave her the one day a week that wasn't a Friday night that I was available that week because Monday we are closed. We may have to push it back, but we, we didn't wanna push it much, um, but we can look into, uh, seeing if Ms. McNally has some other options on the table. I, I'd like to attend, so I'd like to be there, but I don't have to be there, but we'll see if we can make work.
I guess just the same thing again, with just trying to figure out a way to also make this available to parents who may not be able to attend in person or attend at that time, even for offering a hybrid option, but same conversation we had earlier would apply here.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, we're moving on, policy did not meet, that's actually did, I forgot that. Um, we did not meet, there's renewed policies, we will, when we vote next, uh, meeting, the, uh, we'll have a second reading on, uh, the policies, Mr. Peter, board officers, uh, German cancellation of meetings, those are board meetings, by legal D S L, emergency or remote destruction, attendance, student enrollment, due records. We will be, uh, voting on those for a second. If you haven't read them, at the public, another meeting to read through them, I'm sure you're okay with it. Um, I'm not gonna put in a president's report, it's been a long enough meeting, and we just don't wanna open up to public comment. Uh, I do want to, uh, congratulate our, our counselors on National School Council meeting. Uh, Dr. Codya put it in her, in her, uh, eval app, but, uh, we do wanna thank Ms. Asamoah from our direction and all of our counselors who give me principalized to our students every day. We do value, not just this week, but this week, you guys mentioned it, so, thank you. Um, and, uh, yeah, so we're, we're going to the old business. How old business are bringing up? Okay, uh, new business? I'd like to bring up new business, I just wanna, I wanna put something out to the board about looking at long range planning. Um, it is, it is one of our board goals, uh, that this year we try to plan to plan, figuring out what long range planning, uh, that makes sense. So I can reach out to the N J S V A, and they sent back, um, two different possibilities. I'm gonna put that out, we need to help this week, take a look at it, we can discuss it next time, what seems reasonable or what might give us the outcome we need for to both engage the community in long range planning and strategic planning better. Um, and, but not make it over too over risk, given so much of our time already, you know, this, uh, taking out the board business. So, once your email, if you have some thoughts on it, we can get, we'll look at that one next few days. And this would be a plan for next year, not this year. That starts somewhere. Okay, so, uh, the new business, we're gonna open up to public comment, and once again, Highland Park for Education, welcome to public participation, and reserve, reserve this time for your comments. Uh, this, this, uh, time is meant to be not restricted to three minutes, although we're quite happy if you breathe. So, Rebecca, I see your hands raised, why don't you get started?
Okay, can you hear me now? I'm sorry, I'm having all kinds of technical problems.
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh, great, thanks so much. Um, I just, um, would like to say a few words, uh, reiterating what.
Oh, sorry, could you just say you're at the start?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, uh, Rebecca Hirsch, three thirty-one Felton Avenue. Um, thanks for, thanks for taking public comment. I just wanna, um, say my support for the people that have spoken about, um, the, um, very, very quick public process, um, that left the younger school parents completely out of the, um, discussion. I have a child in the high school, I have a child in the middle school, and I have a child at Bartle. And so I've actually been really put into this later start time, later start time discussion. Um, and the whole time, I never had any inkling that like, this was gonna make the younger kids go to school much earlier. Um, so, you know, now we're, now we're put down to the wire, we're, you know, getting up against needing to bid for a bus contract, and it's really the last, it's really at the last minute, and it's unfortunate that, um, people didn't have more of a chance to know what was going on, and also more of a chance to address, um, a lot of the issues in school scheduling that have been longstanding, that people have accepted but not been happy about. If we had known that the whole thing was gonna be redone, um, I think that there would have been a lot of things that, that should have been looked at, including, um, for example, what Peter Billton was talking.
that, that should have been looked at, including, um, for example, what Peter Billton was talking about with the A period, um, thing at the high school. I, you know, I have a high schooler, and she quit the music program, and she's like, why would I do that? Like, I gotta do, I wanna go to school before everyone else. And I think that it shows, um, a real lack of support for something that really enriches our educational system and, um, it really, I think it cheapens the experience of a lot of kids who just, uncontinably, if they have a choice, they're not gonna wanna move to school before school starts. And that's how A period is seen. Um, so that, you know, that should have been looked at. Um, the issue of Bartle starting before Irving should have been looked at. It doesn't, it's a sense for older kids that are bordering on adolescence. I mean, the fourth and fifth graders are, a lot of them are already adolescent. They're almost middle schoolers. They should not be getting up so much earlier than the five and six-year-olds. Um, so we, like, we should have looked at this in a holistic way and staggered them from the youngest kids to the oldest kids. Um, and, you know, I just, I, I, you know, I don't wanna beat a dead horse here, but I don't, I think that starting Bartle at seven forty-five, which is the only people it's that kind that the district has ever had, as far as I know, and at least in the time that I've lived here, um, it's just, you know, at certain times of the year, these kids are gonna wake up in the dark. It's just not, it's so hard to get them there by eight o'clock as it is. And the, the time, and the time in the morning and the time in the evening that we have, that was already really precious and limited, and such a struggle. And, you know, these kids, especially the older Bartle kids, like, they have eve, they have activities in the evening. They have sports. They're not babies anymore, and it, I can't put my kids to bed at seven o'clock. Like, first of all, I would never see him because he's often in outdoor school until six o'clock. And I, I think that it's really, um, not, not having any sensitivity for the fact that, like, a lot of these Bartle kids are gonna be in that building from seven thirty in the morning till six o'clock at night. You know, the, the middle school and high school kids don't have that. It's just, it's just really cruel, I mean, for these little kids. And I, I don't, I feel like how it's presented, like, well, if you don't support more sleep for high schoolers, you, you know, you're, you're not coming at it from the right way. Like, oh, of course we support that. Like, I, I, I have a sixteen-year-old. I get it, I get it. But I just, I just reject that narrative that it has to be a zero-sum game as someone already said. And I'm just wondering, like, what, what would it take? What would it take, you know? If there's, if there's a possibility to reevaluate, like, what would it take? Would it take more money? Would it take a crossing yard? Would it take finding a way to get the Bartle to pay for a bus route? Like, what would it take? Like, like, can we try to make that happen? I just don't wanna give up. I don't, I think we owe it to these kids, especially the Bartle kids, but they're there for four long years. And I, I mean, it's just, it's just so, it's so hard to get them to school at that time. And they've already, and you know, as Andrea said, they've already suffered so many setbacks. You know, my, my third grader was in kindergarten when COVID started. He, he missed such critical stuff and such critical learning, you know, foundational learning opportunities. And it's just, I don't think that we should literally and figuratively throw these Bartle kids under the bus. We've, we've gotta try to figure this out. So I just wanna know, like, what, what it would take, and I hope that we have a couple more weeks to try to figure that out. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Not seeing any hands. We wanna thank everybody that spoke, came to the meeting to listen. We want to present tonight. Appreciate you all coming and listening, um, and a big part of the process. But if there are no more public comments, I'm going to move that we adjourn tonight. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, everyone. Good night, everyone.